Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to thank you all for attending this afternoon. We will start with the roll call, please. Gladstone.
Here.
Mollay.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Valente.
Here.
Tuthill.
Here.
Axdel.
Here.
Taggart.
Here.
Marshfield.
Here.
Vernal.
Here.
Isel.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Ellis.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Hinckley.
Here.
Kozier.
Here.
Layton.
Here.
Seta.
Here.
Please join us in invocation by Supervisor Marshfield and pledge to the flag, Mr. Gladstone.
Okay, let us bow our heads, please. Dear Lord, we pray to you for the leaders of this nation. Let no personal ambition blind them to their opportunities. Guide the leaders of this great county that with steadfast purpose we may faithfully serve in our offices to promote the well-being of our 46,000 residents. We commend your gracious care and safekeeping all of our men and women in our armed forces at home and abroad. In these times, help them day by day with your heavenly grace. Give them courage to face the perils which face them and grant them a sense of your abiding presence. We thank you for making this earth fruitful. Bless those who work our lands and grant that we may all share in the fruits of our earth. Give us the wisdom and the reverence to use our natural resources of nature that no one may suffer from our abuse of them and that generations yet to come may continue to praise you for your bounty. All this, we pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of last meeting's minutes. Were there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, they will stand as submitted. Communications?
All communications have been referred to the appropriate committees.
Okay, we have three presentations this afternoon. First, I'd like to give the privilege of the floor to Mr. Gladstone.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Tyler Frame from 3+1 to present Bev Shields with an award for her financial achievements in the finance department.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks so much for the opportunity today. I'm Tyler Frame from 3+1, and I've got with me standing Treasurer Bev Shields. Today is a really exciting day, and just to give you a really quick overview, 3+1 is a liquidity data company. We have been working with Delaware County and Bev's office since early 2019, and our single goal is to ensure that all of the taxpayers' funds that Bev and her office manage for Delaware County are always receiving the best value they possibly can. From the moment that you take in a tax dollar to the moment that you spend it, defining how long that tax dollar is available for and ensuring that Delaware County's taxpayers' funds are always maximized. Bev and her team have done a really great job over the last two years to really set the stage across New York State and even the country for the highest standards of liquidity management. Today, we're presenting our Cash Fest 90+ Club Award. This is given to any entity that 3+1 works with that has achieved a Cash Fest score, which is the scoring metric that we use to measure liquidity management across the country. If you receive four consecutive quarters of 90% or above, that qualifies you for this award. And for context, Delaware County is one of eight other counties in New York State that are receiving this award this year. We hope that eventually all counties in New York State can say that they are within the top 10% of entities nationwide for liquidity management. But we're really excited today and honored to work with you all and to present this word to Bev and her team because it takes a lot of work. There's a lot of communication throughout the county to get this stuff done, but being able to show your taxpayers that you're looking under every rock, under every stone, making sure that the tax dollars that you all have available to you are being maximized. So really appreciate the opportunity today, and maybe, Bev, I don't know if you want to say a few words?
I'll say a couple.
All right. But congratulations.
Well, thank you. And he used the aptly word "the team." Finance has been on board with this project since day one, and Joan Chaitell has just been excellent at helping with the project, and I thank all of those. And I really want to say something for 3+1, that they identified something that county governments needed, and they stepped in and filled up the gap and gave us this product.
Thank you, Bev. Congratulations.
Okay, next on the agenda, I'll give privilege of the floor to Mr. Taggart.
I'd like to introduce me, Darla, an extension, do a presentation to us. They supplied us with milk and ice cream and goodies. We appreciate that, at least I do, and I don't seem to enjoy ours.
And Jeff supplied whipped cream and cherries to go with that ice cream.
Rested, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
So thank you so much for the privilege of the floor and actually the opportunity to be here in person today with you. As we know, 2021, we're still dealing with some issues with the pandemic, and I would say that our programming, we've always been out working in person with people, especially on the farms, but now we're doing so many other ways of actually reaching audiences virtually. And so the hybrid model, which is what we wanted to try today, was to actually do an in-person presentation as well as making sure everybody that's online can also see our presentation. So a lot of our programming now in the extension is actually offering both in-person and virtual connections, which is really wonderful. So I want to introduce the team from Extension that's here today. We have a small team because we know the space here. We can bring everybody today, but I wanted to let you know that our 4H program is in transition. Emily Roach is now getting experience as an interim position leading the 4H program here in Delaware County, and so we want to welcome her to that role. And then also, Perinne Tompkins, who is our 4H camp director, wanted to share a little information about 4H camp. It's been an awesome year to have kids back at camp, but we've also had some challenges. So we want to actually, besides our video presentation, we'd really like to spend just a few minutes talking about camp and what's happening at camp. So we're going to start with the video presentation. It highlights our annual report, which you have a copy of on your desk. There are a lot of programs here we didn't have pictures for that are virtual, but if you read the annual report, you'll see a lot of other programs that we're offering. And then we're also going to introduce the 4H CCE Camp Shenkotank Fund. We're going to talk a little bit about that, and you have a flyer on your desk that really tells you some information about the fund. You have questions, we certainly will have time for questions today. So we're going to start with the video, and then we'll share a few summary comments on 4H camp.
Darn, I was really digging that. So yes, we've done a lot during the year, and as Jeannie mentioned, I did just want to give you a quick update about camp. We were able to successfully open this summer. We ran six weeks of our program, both day and overnight, with no COVID outbreaks. So that was possible through a multi-level safety program, and we were very happy and excited to have the kids back. The community was super supportive. We received several grants from the Community Foundation, the O'Connor Foundation, stewards, local companies, community banks, so many businesses really came together to help us acquire what we needed to make those safety protocols work, and it was a success. So we're feeling very happy and grateful to our community for this year. The summer was not without challenges, for sure. Like many businesses in the county, we were facing a staff shortage. So I wouldn't say we were quite at 50% staffed, but we were definitely, we had a reduced staff, and so that was a little challenging for us. We're looking ahead to the future. We're sure that's going to continue, but it's also given us an opportunity to look at, you know, our compensation for the young professionals who work with our youth at camp. And so we're taking a look at how we can make a sustainable change or sustainable increase to recruit strong candidates to work with our youth in the camp program. We're also looking at maybe some capital projects that would allow us to be a little more inclusive, you know, in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion. And so that's a major jumping off point for the fund, which you all have a flyer at your seat for. We've established a fund with the Community Foundation for South Central New York. Our goal is, over time, to raise about $150,000, which can be used as a sustainable account for us when it comes to making capital improvement projects. Our first project that we're going to try to tackle is our bath house. It needs a new roof, it needs new windows, it doesn't have very good ventilation, and we also would love to add some gender-neutral bathrooms to that facility, you know, whether it's our group or we have rental groups in, or if we do family camping, we would just like to have a gender-neutral bathroom space. So that's going to be our first priority project, but there's always buildings at camp with all those cabins that need to be re-roofed and things like that. And the county has been a generous supporter over the years, and we just want to open up the pool to bring in new possible donors. We do have people that have been super generous and amazing to helping Shenkotank be at the top of its game where we are right now, and this fund is an opportunity for us to open up that donor circle for people that are looking for a good cause to give to relating to youth, and we think it'll be a good opportunity to bring in new donors to help camp continue into the future and make capital improvements around camp. So if you have any questions, I know that you have a lot to do today. Feel free to find us afterward, and do you have anything else you want?
No, I just hope you enjoyed the ice cream. Maybe we really want to thank our farmers here in Delaware County. We appreciate all of the great work that they do to feed us, and so we were able to feature today local foods, milk from Clark Farms. I think you know Clark Farm Business is on Elk Creek here in Delhi, and I actually picked up the milk this morning. I was talking to some of the supervisors about it. They are delivering milk three days a week and may actually add an additional day to deliver our products. So that's great to see the businesses growing. And our other treat was ice cream from Polar Bear in Franklin, and we wanted to share that this is a business, I think, that's doing very, very well, and they make their own ice cream here, right in the county. So we wanted to, again, thank everyone for your support, and especially for our local foods and farmers in the county that feed us. And if you have questions, feel free to get in touch with us. We are always open to your suggestions and ideas.
Thank you for all that you and our agency does.
Yeah, it's a pleasure, really. We enjoy our work.
At this time, I'm going to introduce Jess Vecchione and Amber Gray and Jen Cutting to give a presentation on a project that they've been working on called Delcoverie.
Thank you. So we, as you know, we've been working with social media projects for the county. So Public Health reached out to us about, around June, to work with some state money to put out resources for people in recovery, to get them out to the county. And when we thought about it, Amber, who is the social media manager for Vec Videoography, we said, you know, let's not do something that's just institutional, you know, pictures of a building, go here, do this. We said, let's do something different, and what we came up with was the idea of having a map of the county that showed resources all over, and not only substance use disorder resources, but also law enforcement resources, recreation, food pantries, places where you might be able to get free clothing. So we worked with planning to get the maps together, and then we worked with an artist to create a map of Delaware County that has all of these points where people can find services. And we also have insets, because as you would imagine, most of the services are concentrated in towns, village areas. We made up a website, we did a Facebook page and Twitter, and also TikTok. We're going to do TikTok videos. And we also got a local writer to come up with a name, and the name is Delcoverie, which I think is pretty clever, and we have a great logo we're going to show you. We also contracted with Jen Cutting, who is a person in long-term recovery and runs a Supplies for Life, a program out of Delaware Opportunities, and she's also the peer for ADAC in our jail. Of course, she hasn't been in there because right now they're still not letting anyone in, but she is the peer for the jail. She's our ambassador. So we're also doing a video series starring Jen, where she goes into places and talks to the people that run whatever service it is. And so far, we've done one with ADAC, and I have one that I'm editing that we've done with Craig, so that, you know, Craig can talk a little bit about law enforcement and how that interacts with services. So we have a really good team, and unfortunately, it did take a long time for the state to approve things. So we launched, when did we launch, two weeks ago?
One week ago.
One week ago, and I mean, I can't believe how, the videos have 4,000 views, we have, you know, over about 300 likes and a lot of very positive comments. So I am going to go over to the computer so I can show you the website, and Amber will just tell you a little bit about it, and really, this was her baby, and it's beautiful. And then Jen is just going to briefly tell you why this is important. Oh, and by the way, we have funding for six months. ADAC is also going to be the portal that this goes through, you know, when funding is done, and even now. And Mary is pretty committed to finding more funding so that this can go on into the future, because it's looking like it's pretty good. And we're also looking at getting plastic cards printed that are credit card size that can be handed out in different agencies, offices, and also at the jail when people are leaving the jail, so that they can, they know where to go to look at a map, you know, with all kinds of services. And also, I'd like to thank GIS. Spencer was amazing, helping us with the maps, and they're always so helpful. You know, it's always, there's always your resource you can find when you're working with the county, and people are always happy to help. So I'm going to go over to the website so that Amber can quickly go through it and show you the maps.
So this is the homepage of the website, and we wanted to make it very welcoming, very friendly to people who are either, you know, just starting out on recovery or just getting interested in it, or who may be in long-term recovery and are just waiting to discover more resources that Delaware County has to offer. So on the homepage here, are you going to play the video? I don't know if I can hear it.
It's one minute.
Okay, so this is our welcome video. Hey, everybody, my name is Jen Cutting, and I am a woman in long-term recovery. And today, I would like to introduce you all to an exciting new resource. It's called the Delcoverie Road to Recovery Map. This beautiful map of Delaware County shows you where all the resources are in the county to help you with your plan for recovery. But it's more than that. We've included things like hiking trails and parks, places we need to know about to make our lives complete. You can find the Delcoverie map on our Facebook and Instagram pages, as well as the official Delcoverie website. There will be detailed information on all the map's resources there, and we'll be updating those pages with new information all the time, so please stop by often. Look for a couple of videos a month with me, and I will be taking you to places on the map so you can meet the folks there, and they can help you on your recovery journey. Looking forward to seeing you on the Delcoverie Road to Recovery. So I tried to make the website very user-friendly. People, you know, they don't have a lot of time to be searching for resources, especially when they're in need. So the recovery trail is a series of maps. You have the full county map with all the resources on it, and then as you scroll down, all these maps have a printable PDF link underneath them. We also featured some of the villages and the town centers where a lot of the resources are localized and gave some more close-up views of those. Each of these maps has the resources listed on them, everything from services specific to people who are in recovery, to resources that really could be useful for anyone looking for a little bit of help as far as, you know, anything from social services, resources to food resources, health insurance, kind of anything that you would need if you're in recovery. And so again, these maps are all printable, and they list each resource there in key, which I realize you can't really see right now. And then if you go up in the navigation bar to the S U D Services, these are, these services are where, if you are just out of, say, jail, or you're just sitting at home thinking, you know, I really need to do something about my substance use, I don't know where to start, this is the page that you would go to and, you know, kind of pick and choose who seems, who you would like to work with. And so you can contact any one of these resources, and they will connect you basically with a startup, you know, where to start, what programs would be useful to you, what other resources you may benefit from across the county. We also have, you know, national programs like ELLON ON and AA listed on there for people who are interested in those things. And so those are where you would start. If you're looking for more general resources, if you want to click right there, you can kind of pick and choose what services in Delaware County you're interested in. And there are a lot of resources, so displaying them this way, you can kind of pick and choose what you need at the time. So say you clicked on Housing Assistance. That would bring up all the organizations within Delaware County that could help you find a home or maintain your home if you are a homeowner, and so those are some of the services there. And then as you would click through the rest of the buttons, you could find the resources particular to your needs. And then to make sure that it's, you know, Delaware County is a beautiful county, we have tons of outdoor recreation, which is beneficial to all people. So we felt putting a recreation map as a starting point for people to get out and live healthy lives was important. So this is just a starting point. There's some basketball courts on here, some walking trails, and then links to go out further if people really want to get into it. And then the last tab there is the About page. It's about the project, you know, who the project is and the funding, things like that. So I am Jen Cutting. As just mentioned, I am a woman in long-term recovery, and I'm very proud to be a part of this project, because as a woman in recovery, I know when I first started on my path, it was extremely difficult to find resources. It was very intimidating. I had to ask someone, so that meant I had to openly admit I had a problem. I couldn't do any research on my own to try and find anything out. And when something like this is available, that's very warm and friendly and inviting and not very clinical and scary and unapproachable, even if you are sober, curious, you have everything at your fingertips, and it's so easy to use, and there's social media, so there's TikToks, which is three useless seconds out of your life, but you absorb so much information. And it just makes it so it's warm and inviting, and it makes people not feel so overwhelmed with potentially having to pick up a phone if they don't want to, or maybe they're not in a place where they can, or maybe they don't have cell phone service. Maybe they only have, you know, borrowed Wi-Fi where they can scroll through a map and see if something is available, or get an email address to contact someone. So something like this is very modern, it's very progressive, and it's very sorely needed in our substance use affected area. So I'm super proud to be a part of it, and I hope you guys like it.
I think this has been, it's great. It really is starting.
It's really a starting point for a lot of people and where to go.
Right.
And also, you know, because Jen is so well-known in the community for her work with people in recovery, having her as ambassador is like, really, I mean, we're very lucky to be able to have her as a resource. So, and already, I mean, she's, she even got, she got a text from Amsterdam, somebody who wants to be on the map, who's a MAT medicated Suboxone.
Doctor.
Doctor. And she was vacationing and said, I saw this, and I want to be on the map. So, you know, it's, Jen is a real magnet for these, for these things.
Thank you.
But we think, I think Amber did an amazing job with all the assets, and we are hoping that ADAC will be able to procure the funding to bring, you know, to bring it into the future, too.
I think it would be amazing if we can get enough funding to turn it into an app.
That would be.
That would be stellar.
Killer. And on a different subject, I just wanted to say that we're going to be sending out our very first Delaware County newsletter tomorrow. And we've had sign-ups on the Facebook page for a while, and once the newsletter goes out for the first time, I think we'll get a lot more sign-ups. And you'll be seeing that. And again, Amber did an amazing job with it, and it's got, it's got stuff from every aspect of the county. And as we move on quarterly doing these, we're hoping that we get input from everybody for, you'll get deadlines for when we need something, whatever it is, a story or something you want to show off from your town, or the committees that you had, we'd love to have that content.
I've had the opportunity to review this newsletter that's coming out, and it is amazingly well-done. For the first time, I think it gives the county the opportunity to say, you know, all the good things that we're doing and inform everyone of what it is. It's not always negative. So it's extremely well-done and informative, and I thank you. Department heads will have the opportunity in the future to submit articles, especially helpful in keeping the public up to date with what we're doing. So who just wanted to, Jeff, did you want to say something? No, Bud, I'm sorry. I saw a hand up.
Jen, if I heard you practically, you just started at, is that what you said?
Yes, I think that this would be so amazing to start an app because anyone who is coming home from incarceration, newly, you know, into their pathway of recovery, coming out of a rehab facility, detox, anything like that, it's much easier and less intimidating to download an app onto your phone and have all of this in one place. It could even, you know, direct people to where, like, hey, you're in Delhi. What's the closest recovery trail to you? Or, you know, pier, or whatever the case may be. Or it's just less intimidating. When you move first in recovery, you're scared of everything. Everything is new, everything is just starting over. So when you can have these resources that are at your fingertips, but you can also navigate them on your own, they also help you feel more accomplished. And to have it as an app would just be, I think, an amazing way for us to be able to continue to make this long-term. Because let's face it, papers get messy, papers get lost. That's why we came up with the cards, like the hard plastic type cards, thinking everyone could keep them in their wallet. I know for myself, for the first two and a half years of my recovery, I carried a laminated 12-step card in my wallet. And I still have it to this day. So I think things like that, we need to think of like longevity of how to keep the project. And cards like that in an app are modern ways to do that. And more cost-effective because then we're not printing out papers.
You mentioned the funding for the app. What kind of funding does it take to, I guess?
That I do not know.
Well, my guess, this is a total guess. I think you're probably looking at, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 for an app, app creation. But please don't quote me because I have not really looked at that. But this is perfect for an app situation, absolutely. And, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's other associated costs to that, but it's pricey, and it did not fit into the budget we had, you know. But I mean, it was.
It's worthwhile cost.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
It is because that is how people do it today. You know, they want to download an app, and that, this particular program would, you know, translate to an app situation very easily. Just the money. You know, ADAC is, we're working with Mary Rosenthal. She wanted to be here but had to be at the dentist, and.
That's unfortunate, right.
But, you know, she, she is looking at the possibilities of funding, so we can, we can keep you up to date with that. You know, right now, I want to make sure that we have funding to maintain the Facebook pages, all the social pages, and produce two videos a month going into the future. We're good for six months, till when?
Um, March, I believe.
Yeah, till March. And then funding is gone. But we're working on that, so, you know, I'd like to get that in place and then talk about an app, absolutely. That would, that would be really useful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to standing committee reports. Okay, if there are no standing committee report.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
As we speak, first phase of moving into the behavioral planning process, Children and Family Services section of that, the three entities that are going in that are in process of moving into that, so.
And they should be moved in totally by Friday.
Correct.
Right. Okay, anybody else? Okay, then we'll move on to resolutions. Okay, our first resolution today is Resolution Number 158. 2021 Budget Amendment Mental Health Clinic. Any questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Todd Hill?
Yes.
Axdel?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 159.
Public hearing for the inclusion of agriculturally viable land into certified agricultural districts during the designated 30-day period for annual district review.
Just take note that Kent has placed on, I think, in the package, a brief description of what gives an agricultural district, and when that comes up in the review.
Okay, so the, the public hearing will be scheduled for Wednesday, November 10th at 1:00 in this, in this boardroom. That's our next meeting. Was it brought up? It was, okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay. Next resolution.
I'd like to bring local laws 3 through 14 up for their approval.
Okay, Resolution Number 161.
I'd like to bring Resolution Number 161 up to the floor and ask for its approval.
Public hearing local laws intros number 3 through 14 of 2021. Some of you may ask why there are only certain department heads. These are department heads that are coming up for reappointment at our organizational meeting in January.
Just the opposite. Just the opposite. They're the ones that.
These are not, correction, these are not the ones. These are department heads that are still in a term that does not expire at the end of the year. Thank you for that. Are there any questions on this? Okay, please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Todd Hill?
Yes.
Axdel?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Resolution Number 163.
I'll bring it up.
Second.
Supporting Operation Green Light for active military service members in transition to civilian life, veteran status, Veteran Service Agency.
Questions? Comments? Okay, it's a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, we have one not prefiled resolution. I'll waive Rule 10 without objection. And bring up Resolution Number 164.
I'd bring that up, Moford's Adoption.
Payment of audit. Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Todd Hill?
Yes.
Axdel?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Resolution Number 163.
I'll bring it up.
Second.
Supporting Operation Green Light for active military service members in transition to civilian life, veteran status, Veteran Service Agency.
Questions? Comments? Okay, it's a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, we have one not prefiled resolution. I'll waive Rule 10 without objection. And bring up Resolution Number 164.
I'd bring that up, Moford's Adoption.
Payment of audit. Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Todd Hill?
Yes.
Axdel?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Okay, are there any committees that need to meet following this meeting?
Do we have a short meeting for capital projects and shared services?
Sure. So Capital Projects and Shared Services Committee will meet in this boardroom immediately following the board. Is there any other business that needs to be brought forward today?
Tina, could I say something here?
Wayne?
I was going to give an A R P meeting synopsis today, but in light of, I'll do it in person. It'll be much better. Thank you. I'll do it at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. We hope you feel better.
Did you hear him? Okay?
No.
Yeah, it's hard to hear. Okay, enjoy the rest of the afternoon. Meeting's adjourned.